Okay, we'll go ahead and get started here. Before we get into the actual meeting, I'm going to lead you guys in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Tyler will lead us in the invocation, so if you'll stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, equal to all.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for getting us through this past year and pray that this new year will lead us to a vaccine that works for us. We just pray for this city, grateful for the many great things that you've given this city. Ask you to please guide us and help us make the best decisions that we can. Pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Well, thank you all for joining us for our January 5th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. I will call this meeting to order if we can do roll call.
Howard Austin?
Here.
Gary Compton?
Here.
Ray Covert?
Here.
James David?
Here.
Shannon Mueller?
Here.
Peyton Parker?
Here.
Kevin Parsley?
Here.
Ben Peters?
Here.
Dale Tyler?
Here.
Very good. Any questions or comments for the December 2020 Planning Commission meeting?
This is Andrew Perkins. Hi, Ian.
If there's not any questions or comments, do I have a motion to approve the amendments for December? I have a motion by Mr. Covert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Dr. Compton? Okay. A second by Dr. Compton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. See, there is one item on the agenda that will not be heard this evening, and that was withdrawn per applicant. That is B-21-03 Peaks at Springdale, 1300 Cooper Drive. That was withdrawn per applicant, so we will not hear that this evening. So the first item we do have on the agenda is amendment for the Springdale Code of Ordinance, Chapter 56, Landscape and Buffers, by amending Section 56.31.3, Perimeter Landscaping Other Than Street Frontage, in Section 56.37, presented by Patsy Christie.
I think Austin's going to take this one.
Okay.
So I think we've spoken to you guys a little bit, had some work sessions about making some amendments to Chapter 56. A lot of the changes that we have made are things that we've been aware of for some time, and we're just going back and making the definitions better match some of the diagrams that are provided to make it a little more explanatory. So I'll kind of give you a short run-through of some of these changes. Number 56.27, Goals and Objectives. Change number five to preserve desirable, we had desirable trees. We changed that to preserve and utilize mature canopy where existing, just to back on the redundancy within that section. Made some updates to our definitions for irrigation system and landscape architek, just adding State of Arkansas to that to be a little more straightforward. Let's see. We spoke a little bit about this one. This is the prior section, the diagram that we've had for a number of years, and on the next slide you'll see we've made some change to make this one a little more straightforward and reflect the actual five-foot perimeter strip that is in. Exactly what was being asked for with that, so. And we have also removed the Bradford pear from the tree choices for obvious reasons. It is an invasive species, so we have just circled around and finally made that change. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. I believe this would be a recommendation. Okay? And that was by Mr. Covert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. David. I'll turn it over to you.
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And that passes nine zero. Thank you very much. And next item we have on here, we have two tabled items. The first one, B-20-67 Smith &amp; Walker Enterprises, 1386 East Emma Avenue, variance for deviation to increase hours of operation 24/7, and variance for deviation of utility requirements.
Hello, I'm Victor Smith. This is Joel Walker. We have a line of pet wash service businesses. That's a self-service pet wash. You bring your pet in there, it comes, it's like a car wash for your pet. It's like a vending machine. So our Fayetteville Tiny Town, Eureka Springs locations, they're all 24 hours. And the way that it fell was Patsy and Debbie decided to put us set towards a mobile side, so with some of those items in there. All of our other ones are 24 hours, so we want to look for a variance for that and for the permanent utility requirements.
Okay, staff comments?
I believe this is one of... Go ahead, go ahead, Patsy.
Austin, you're going to head on this or are you going to?
No, go ahead, Patsy.
Okay. The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable. The off-street parking and loading areas are acceptable with the condition that the access area has to be paved. Refuge is acceptable. The utilities will be acceptable. My understanding you'll be tying into the existing utilities with the structure that's existing there. There's no screening and buffering requirements. The only signage, as I understand, will be on the structure itself. The yard requirements are acceptable. The site's in shape, the site is acceptable. There's no proposed landscaping. It's acceptable with the following conditions: that the extended hours of operation be approved, that the utility connection be approved, and that paving be completed, and the standard list of attachments for a mobile vending unit, which indicates that if a health certificate is required, displace the health certificate in a manner visible to customers, no obstruction of pedestrians or motor vehicle traffic flow, no obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs, no vending upon a public way, no sound device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance, or violate any other city ordinances in connection with the vending operation. Sites to remain clean and free of paper or refuge of any kind generated from the operation of the business, with all trash or debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand to be collected and deposited into a trash container.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
So is this going to be permanently attached to utilities or not permanently attached to utilities?
Permanently attached.
And that's one of the other variances, is the variance for the increased hours of operation and the ability for it to be hooked to the utilities on a permanent basis.
Oh, I see. So connecting it is the variant. Normally they're not allowed to be.
Right. Correct. Okay. And normally they can operate 24/7, but this one is not one where you've got somebody coming up, well, you have people coming up to wash their pets, but it's not a typical vending unit. The reason we went with a mobile vending, that if it's not, it has to meet commercial design standards, because it becomes a permanent structure, and they didn't want to have to go that route either. They wanted to use their existing or their model for the unit that they want to place it.
Hey, Patsy, is there any way you can turn your volume up a little?
Yeah. I thought I had it up as much as it can go. Is that helping any?
Or is it in here? Okay.
We can hear Patsy fine online, by the way.
Okay.
Where is the, I just had a question about where it's going to sit on the site. I don't, I could, I didn't see that in the packet.
I submitted a plan, but it should sit, if you're facing, I guess, Parsons Stadium, looking towards Quality Mobile Home, it'd be to the right of the building.
Okay, I see it now on the slide. It's up there.
I believe it was 90-foot setback with 60 or 75 feet from the main building and 20 feet from the property line, but there is an easement on the driveway, and from my understanding, we should, it should all be in clear there. But it's 20 feet off of the easement line, and we went that way, so we didn't have to, that was unclear, if it needed to be 20 feet off of the easement on this side of it, or 20 feet off the easement.
That's okay. I was just curious about where it would be setting, so I'm good.
Any other questions or comments?
So the variants need to be addressed first, because I'm not sure they want to operate if they can't get the variants.
This will be a call for the vote.
A call for the vote.
Take them together, Kim. That's up to you. We can take them together if that's good with everyone. Okay? So this will be a call for the vote for both variances, deviation of increased hours and deviation of utility requirement, which is the ability as far as to connect to it permanently in there. So we have a call for the vote by Mr. Covert. If we can go through.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Variance has passed nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
So from here, we go to City Council? Is that the next step, I guess?
Well, there has to be a vote on the conditional use part.
Right.
Why don't we, since you're up here, why don't we move over to that as far as the conditional use, so we can get them done together? So I'm jumping over to C-20-23, Smith &amp; Walker Enterprises, 1386 East Emma Avenue, conditional use unit, 44 mobile vending in a C2, presented by Victor Smith. I think you've gone through as far as what you're wanting to do, as far as the...
Right.
Okay. Staff comments?
I already went over the comments for the conditional use, too.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission. Be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Mueller.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
The conditional use passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the 26th.
I couldn't hear.
So January 26th, this will be, go to City Council.
Okay, same building?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I had to ask that, because at some point this is going to be relocated.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, can y'all hear me? This is Kevin Flores.
Yes, we can hear you, Kevin.
Hey, just for my sake, did y'all vote on that unanimously? It'll come up on, in City Council, I just want to know off the top of my head.
It did.
Okay, thanks.
Kevin, the resolutions, we'll tell what the vote is when we put the resolutions together.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next section is rezoning. R-20-49, Dilpreet Singh, approximately 600 feet south of intersection of Elm Springs Road and 40th Street, located behind 700 North 40th Streets, from A1 to C2, presented by Morrison Shipley. Were they going to join online?
Do we have someone with us from Morrison Shipley?
Yes, this is Aaron Saintemot from Morrison Shipley for questions.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
This air handler is so loud, we can't hear a thing back here. I'm sorry. Yes, we're proposing to build a...
I'm sorry. Yes, this is Aaron Saintemot with Morrison Shipley Engineers.
Okay, if you guys want to go through what you're wanting to accomplish here?
We're proposing to build another convenience store with gas pumps at a location at 412 and Oriole Street, and we have, I guess, rezoning, a...
That's the wrong one.
...plat, and variances.
Yeah, that's...
We have a number of items here this evening, so.
Yeah, this is for the intersection of Elm Springs and 40th Street.
Okay, this is Elm Springs and 40th. I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Yes, we're proposing, that's another one of our locations. We've got so many of them. Please excuse my confusion, yes. We're proposing a new store at that location. It'll be on the northwest corner of...
No, no, we're still at the wrong place. This is a project that we approved at large scale on previously, that has some commercial buildings on it. It has this small little tract in the middle of that that was still A1. What they're requesting is to close in that same area around it, so that it is zoned the same as the rest of the property. We knew that last week when we, or last month, when we approved the large scale for this one.
That's correct.
This was submitted under the name of Higher Park.
Yeah.
Yes. This is, I couldn't, I couldn't hear Patsy. This is the store at Elm Springs and 40th, is that correct?
No, sir. This is for Higher Park. This is the rezoning associated with the large scale for Higher Park, which was approved at the last Planning Commission meeting.
I'm not familiar with that one.
Okay, we got it covered. We're okay. We know what we've got. The land use plan indicates commercial use for this property. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan as recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy and stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and increase the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers. And as I said, this was already part of a project that's already been approved.
My apologies to the commission. I was prepared to talk about Casey's. I didn't know who this was on there.
No, that's fine.
So I'm sorry, I'll just have to plead ignorance on this. I can't answer any questions about this, but I can certainly give the best I can.
No, I think we've got what we need in here, and Patsy went through as far as the staff comments and that one. So any questions or comments from the audience on this property here off of North 40th? Okay, it's to the commission.
This includes the two parcels to the north, too, correct?
No, it does not. They are just, this parcel here is currently A1, and they are proposing for that to go to C2. The other parcels to the north are already existing as C2 and C5, yeah.
If we had heard the rezonings in December like we should have, we would have handled this all at that time, but since we didn't get notices in the newspaper, we had tabled them all to this meeting, it's kind of out of sequence.
Yeah, there's a lot of those for tonight, I think, as far as that's, as far as the rezonings that we couldn't hear. It's a little bit of an odd month in that perspective, so.
One reason...
Any other questions? Shannon, did you have any more questions? Okay. This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
This rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 26th.
Thank you.
Guys upstairs, is there any possibility of beefing this speaker up a little bit? We can barely hear Patsy in here. I don't know if you have that option or not, but.
No, that's fine. And we might need you to read the staff comments on it, just so it can be heard a bit better in here, if you have them on it.
For the rezoning.
Oh, she doesn't have it, okay. Okay. All right, so next rezoning item, R-20-50, Almazz SPC LLC, 1300 North Thompson, from C2 to C5, presented by Antonio Almazz.
Hi, I'm speaking on his behalf. We are here to request a zone change from a zone two to a zone five.
Okay, can you state your name, just for the record, just so we have that?
I am Alejandra Almazz.
Okay, thank you.
And there have been multiple tenants that have been wanting to rent there at that location, that he has had to turn away due to the zoning issues. And there is also, we also want the possibility of maybe making a drive-through in the future if a tenant would like to, and with the current zoning status, we aren't able to do so.
Okay. Staff comments?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. Improve the city's economic base and tax structures through the promotion of healthy and stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper location, and increase the development of a wide range of commercial development of the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, commercial, community, and regional centers. The applicant has also been told that in order to make changes, there has to be adequate parking. So we have to address that anytime there are any new uses that are introduced into this building, but this site has more than usual when we see parking.
I'm pretty sure that the police department, did you have any comments on this one at all, or?
If you can let him come up to the mic on that one for a second. The only comment that I would have is just to be aware that if you rezoned to C5, you can't change what some of the use units be. Use unit 18, bars and taverns be allowed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
Call for the vote.
A call for vote by Mrs. Mueller.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rezoning passes nine zero. Next rezoning, R-20-51, Dream Structures LLC, north side of County Line Road, and between Lowell Road and Oak Street, from A1 to SF1 to MF, from A1 and SF1 to MF12, presented by Steve Fisher, Watkins Boyer, Gray &amp; Curry, P L L C.
I'm Steve Fisher, and Will is supposed to be on Zoom here. We'll see if he's, we may have a conflict of timing and may have to move it back a minute.
I'm here, Steve. Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you, thank you.
All right, so what this is, is the subject property, oh, by the way, I'm Will Kelstrom. I represent Steve Fisher on this rezoning. What this is, the subject property is 4.7 acres in between Morris Avenue and County Line Road. A little bit of history on this parcel. This used to be a county island in between Bethel Heights and Springdale. After Bethel Heights was consolidated into Springdale, it just became a county island.
Recently, the city annexed the portion of this property that was still within the county,
so this is all in the city now, and it got zoned A1 when it came in. So as it stands, the property is currently a mix of A1, SF1, A1 and SF1. We are asking to rezone it to MF12. So if you look at the comprehensive growth map, it calls for medium-density residential right here. That's essentially what we've asked for. If you look at the surrounding uses, they're all residential, so medium-density residential isn't going to come to conflict with that, as well as the fact that the neighborhood directly to the west is also zoned MF12. So in short, this is called for by the comprehensive growth map, and it's compatible with the surrounding uses, and I think this is sort of a non-controversial request. So with that, me and Steve are both here to answer any questions you might have.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates medium-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan as recommended for approval. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, environmental factors, assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size, stabilize property values, and maintain the integrity of neighborhoods by protecting residential neighborhoods from non-residential influences and providing buffers between residential and non-residential areas.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. It's be a call for the vote.
Call for vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Recuse?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
This passes with eight yes and one recuse.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 26th.
Thank you. Next rezoning, R-20-52, Meta Phase 1 LLC, southwest corner of Don Tyson Boulevard and Parkway Circle, from A1 and C2 to C5, presented by Crafton Toll. With Crafton Toll online.
Yeah, if Caroline's not online, this is Tom Henley with Crafton Toll. This is a piece of property just north of the Highlands Oncology Clinic that was, for whatever reason, was left as A1, and Highlands Oncology purchased it, would like to provide some additional parking for their facility on it, and that's what facilitated the need to rezone it.
Okay, staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates reasonable commercial for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan as recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy and stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial developments for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
The rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 26th.
Thank you.
Next item is R-20-53, Pure Springdale, northwest corner of Gene George Boulevard and Deering Road, from PUD to Revised PUD, presented by Crafton Toll.
Thank you, this is Bradley Bridges with Crafton Toll. This project has been previously approved, but through the construction process, we've had to make some changes to make this work. I've tried to lay that out as best I could in the letter, you can see it in the packet there. We've removed one of the larger buildings and several smaller buildings, and replaced a few of the buildings, just to try to be more efficient with the footprints and use of the space that we're taking up with those buildings. This resulted in a net change of, an increase of three units, although it actually did decrease the number of bedrooms, going from more one-bedroom units versus two. If you guys would like for me to walk through those changes, I'd be happy to do so. Overall, the amenities have remained intact, the feel of the development itself is still very much as in the intended spirit, so we feel that we're still within the scope of So we feel that we're still within the scope of the original PUD, but the changes were considered enough so that we needed to bring it back. So I'd be happy to walk through those changes or answer any questions that you may have.
Staff comments?
I don't have any problems with the changes. They are staying with the original intent, and the density of the putt is approved. All of the development requirements and covenants are also in place. None of those has changed. So it's just a matter of changing those items that were, that are shown on the site plan and were included in their letter of change.
So with the revision of the buildings, the architecture and all of that stayed pretty consistent.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah. Architecture hasn't changed any. It would have had to have stayed the same in order to be able to not have a major change in the entire putt itself. So, and I'm hopeful this is the last change we're going to be making, right, guys?
Me too, Ms. Patsy.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is the second or third change on this one, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to make it work this time.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Be a call for the vote? Call for the vote? I didn't see who that was. Oh, I'll say. Call for vote by Dr. Compton.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes. The rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 26th.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, R21-01 Parkway Boulevard LLC, between 4022 South 56th Street and 4200 South 56th Street, from A1 to MF24, presented by ESI.
This is Brandon Rush here for ESI, representing Parkway Boulevard LLC. See, we're looking to rezone this to MF24, and happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates medium-density residential and commercial use for this property. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, suitability, utility, availability, neighborhood compatibility, compatibility, and environmental factors. Multifamily housing units should be developed at a density and scale that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Larger multifamily development should be located on sites with adequate space for off-street parking, accessory structures, and recreational activity toward the edge of single-family residential areas where higher-traffic generation and taller building heights can be accommodated. We did receive one written comment from Travel and Transportation, Inc., LLC, and I need to read that into the record. I am writing to express my concern over the rezoning of the property adjacent to my property, which is located at 4200 South 56th Street. Although I do not object to the high-density multifamily residential district being proposed, I do wish to request a commercial zone setback of approximately 300 feet to protect the property values that are frontage to 56th Street. Allowing the 300-foot of frontage to be zoned commercial will allow for long-term business successes due to both visibility and ease of access to future storefronts. The significance and value of commercial property frontage adds value naturally and allows for the adjacent property to maintain and/or increase their future value. Would like to reiterate my support for the rezoning of the 7.2 acres along the west side of South 56th Street, situated between 4022 South 56th Street and my property located at 4200 to high-density residential district. But I'm requesting that the highway frontage 300-foot setback from the road be zoned for commercial use in order to retain and grow the property values. And it's signed by John B. Backus, Travel and Transportation International.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
Rick, can you go back to the slide that shows the surrounding zoning? You can see that the property to the north of it has C2 in the front of that as well, and there's still an A1 piece there as well.
So the question, Brian, is, is the client interested in this type of request for the frontage?
No, I mean, we're, this owner is the same owner as the MF24 to the north. So it's just going to be, it'll end up being one big development, is what it's going to be, Mr. Taldo. So that's what we're trying to do. We, he and I also own the C2 property right there on the corner as well, but this will end up coming around. There's plenty of, plenty of room for C2 to go up and down that new 56th Street as it's built. So, you know, we're really wanting to do MF24 to add it to that piece.
Great. I just wanted to make sure we were addressing the comments on that. Thank you, Brian. Any other questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Be a call for the vote? Have a call for the vote by Mr. Covert?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
The rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 26th.
Next item, R21-02 Nancy Hagan, 901 Young Streets, from SF2 to MF4, presented by Steve Butcher.
This is a piece of property located just to the east of Brahms, kind of behind Brahms on Young Street. It's kind of what's left of the Carter farm from a long time ago. It was, this property was passed down to Nancy Hagan by her parents. It's been passed down several generations. It's never been developed. Her and her husband own the duplex adjacent to the north, and they own the property to the south. And the Hagens' family members own property across the street, which are also duplexes. What they're wanting to do here is put in a couple of duplexes on that property. One on the north-south, one on the north plot, one on the south plot. So we're asking for the rezoning of that to MF4. Currently, it's SF2.
Okay. Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan as recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility, availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springfield.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, if you can come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Yes, we live at 1,000 Shipley. We've been there for 13 years. We own the property. It's directly adjacent. In the time that we've been there, from the multifamily duplexes across, we've witnessed, and there's police reports of numerous criminal activity requiring police response, from drug activity to battery assault, that we've witnessed it. I mean, it's just, it's ongoing since we lived there, and we don't feel like another, I don't know if it's going to be low-income, but another multifamily duplex is going to help that situation at all. We feel it's detrimental to the community. We've had, there's been theft, extensive theft throughout the neighborhood that we, 95% sure, and even times the police have traced it back to people dwelling in those duplexes. So we really don't feel like an additional duplex is going to do the neighborhood any, any good.
Thank you.
I'm Marvin Warner. If I live at 809 A, Young Street, I rent from another family member. And so they have a property, they own the property next door, a duplex next door, driveway on the other side of me, and this field that they want to develop is adjacent to the other side of the duplex in which my sister lives. I've lived there for about 18 years.
So your sister's at 903?
She's at 809B.
Got it, okay.
Right. They own 807, and this would be called 901ABCD or whatever, you know. So, and I have the same story. I mean, I've had every kind of interaction with people, theft. I mean, I, there are police reports countless times that we've had to call the police. I just saw my favorite policeman, BJ Thompson, coming through here. He's like great at deescalating some of the stuff that's gone on there. But in recent years, I've had physical combat with people that are flopping in that thing across the street. And, I mean, the last two years, and not only that, but it's just the way that they treat me and my sister. You know, my sister has a new car. He likes to take his lawnmower and just blow his grass and leaves and stuff all over her stuff. You know, it's real convenient for them to walk through my yard, make a mess, do whatever. I mean, they're just disrespectful. They're very, they bully their tenants. They only, you know, they won't pick on a male tenant. You know, I had a meth addict next door to me that just...
Sir, the only thing I'm hearing is, is that, I'm hearing you as far as challenges, as far as your, the landlord that's there and that's managing the properties. That is not something that we handle in that whole piece.
I'm just saying, these people, these people should not have, they should not. You should take a look on Google Earth, look down there at the situation and see that there's all these little nooks and crannies where criminals can hide in these places. And I'm agreeing with the man behind me.
I understand.
Who says that, that's what we have there now. We've got bicycle and pass, and passersby, and people just hiding in these nooks. If you would just look down there, these two restaurants, Brahms and Captain D's, right there across the street. These, I mean, there's like garbage bags full of needles in the yard of these places that they manage. I don't want that next door to me.
I understand.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, you know, put something else over there.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name is Shawna Weisman. I also live at 1,000 Shipley Street.
You can pull that down a little bit if you need to.
Oh, right. Thanks. I just wanted to say, I mean, I agree with both of the statements so far. What I've mostly noticed is just the disrespect from the actual landowners. I wanted to make the point to point that out. The gentleman that does all of the landscaping, and he does all the care for the field as of right now, as he said, he blows everything onto our property. Normally, that wouldn't be a big deal for anyone. We've asked him to stop over the last 13 years, every single time. Now he does it out of spite. We have rocks thrown from his lawnmower, things like that. So the landowners, in our minds, are very disrespectful. So what our problem, I think, mostly is, if they build more duplexes, those duplexes are going to be the closest to our house. So they're going to be right up to the back of our house. And so now we're concerned about more disrespect, more damage to our property, because those landowners have not shown that they're, in our minds, appropriate landowners that take care of their property the way they should and respect the tenants that are around the land that they own. So I think that's the point that we're really trying to make.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the audience?
May I address those comments?
Please.
I am aware of some dispute going back and forth between this, the property between 1,000 Shipley and this empty lot. I'm also aware of some, some cut-through that happens between there, between Shipley and, and Young Street, which is, part of this project is to help remedy that with a privacy fence that the Hagens want to put up, or at least a chain-link fence at least. I have no idea what's going on between the two landowners. I think there has been some back and forth, pushing debris back and forth against that fence line on the west side there, or the east side of this property. But I find it hard to believe that just because someone rents a duplex that they're more, more inclined to, you know, commit crimes than somebody in a single-family home.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're not going to go into a lot of back and forth as far as on this whole piece here, on it. But, I mean, you're more welcome to make a comment, but...
It directly relates to the rezoning. He's talking about keeping up the property and a fence. They've ruined our fence because they haven't taken care of the property. So, I mean, I'm not really concerned about the landlords taking care of this property. I'm concerned about it becoming a low-income, multifamily dwelling that's exactly like what we already have. It attracts the kind of people that we have, that have continuously had criminal activity that is recorded. So that's my concern. I don't care how they take care of the property. They're attracting a certain criminal element to those duplexes that they already have. If we repeat that again, we're just adding more of that element. That's what, that's my problem.
Thank you. Yes, sir? You'll need to come up to the mic on it, so we can be able to get everything on record here, so.
They just allowed people to just move into this duplex across the street and stay over there for two years. And this guy just, just sold flop space. I've got photographs of them bringing jugs with hoses out of the top and carrying a huge generator out of there, three men. And, I mean, every time the cops come by, you know, picking up these little bags of white powder from these guys and carrying them off, and, I mean, and, I mean, and next door to me, too. I mean, I finally get a couple of decent tenants, and, I mean, they're just... I mean, that's what I'm saying is, you know, what they want is some kind of a criminal or something. I mean, they, you know, in their business, sometimes people work for them.
Well, I'm outside of...
I'm just saying, you know, what I am, I'm a loving, I'm a...
Springdale Planning Commission on the Zoom. I went in once and did a rezoning.
The person that's on, online, can you mute, please? I understand your concerns, and it sounds like there are certain things there that's probably for the police or the community engagements as far as involvement in that whole piece. This particular is about a rezoning in this particular area, and...
I, 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 but, I mean, why do you want, I mean, why do you want to just make more ghetto space, right? I mean, that's going to, that's going to ruin these people's property.
We're making an assumption here. I mean, anytime you're...
No, 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 no.
I'm talking about two vacant property, two vacant lots that are right here. There's nothing there in that whole piece. Sir, I'm sorry. If you could please come to the mic if you're going to make a comment.
They're wanting to build the same exact thing in that empty lot that they have across the street that has attracted criminal element. That's my concern. I mean, can we not address that? Is that not, can that not be a concern? I mean, I feel like an upscale, single-family home would be a better addition to the neighborhood than more low-income duplexes that are already there and have historically been an issue.
The only thing I'm going to correct you on is the comment as far as low-income piece. There is a lot of use as far as multifamily that, you can't just make that determination in the whole piece.
I'm only basing that on what they, the owners of this vacant lot already have built across the street.
I understand.
That's my, I mean, what can I assume? Do they have plans? Are they going to, is it going to be a nicer property? Am I going to get a real fence? Because they've destroyed my property, I mean, because they don't take care of it already.
Right now, what we're hearing is just as far as a rezoning piece. At the point, as far as when they do build, they will have to, as far as apply for the building permits and comply with the rules and regulations as far as the building codes in there. There's a significant amount of older properties that are in this area here. And, you know, I would tell you that the city, over the years, has done a tremendous amount as far as to continue to clean up certain things and to, I mean, I would tell you as far as... mean, I would tell you as far as development like this can be a benefit to areas.
If it's done right, but my concern is, is what they've done already. If it's based on that, it's not-
I can't address the past. This is what we're here as far as to help, as far as manage going forward.
Well, then, can we have some sort of guarantee that it won't be a low-income house like they have across the street and they already operate?
Kevin- Go ahead, Patsy. Go ahead.
Is the mayor still in the room?
Yeah, go ahead. Did you have a question for-
Is the mayor still in the room?
Yeah, he's in the room.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, is this something that we can turn over to the police department and to code enforcement for them to do an investigation into?
Yeah, I see Danny here. And of course, Danny's part of the police department, and I'm sure a lot of these concerns, as Kevin, as you've rightly pointed out, those are, those are policing issues and code enforcement issues that we need to be aware of and enforce. I don't see those as zoning issues. But, that's my opinion. And Patsy, I don't know, am I answering what you need me to answer?
I mean, what you're hearing from the mayor is, is that there are multiple groups within the city that can help address your concerns in that whole piece. I appreciate your concerns. We appreciate your concerns here.
If I'm right, one of you lives in duplex, right? Okay. And so, the issue's not putting duplexes there. So, it's not a zoning issue. It's an enforcement issue that we need to address with the, with the property.
There are nice duplexes and then there are squatters. I mean, but historically, they run the squatter duplex. That's my concern. And here's, I mean, I'm confused as why that, the history of what they've done before doesn't inform what they're going to do here.
We're here to consider the best and highest use of the property and considering that from the perspective of a potential owner is not something that we would discuss as part of this.
The neighborhood is mostly made up, this is the only duplexes in the neighborhood that are congregated there. And I feel that single-family dwelling would improve the neighborhood more so than a multifamily duplex. That's what I'm trying to say.
And that's a fair comment. And that's what we were wanting to hear from you guys on that. Okay?
Let me say this about, you know, the low-income housing issue. They, you know, continually, they raise the rent on their tenants every six months. And so, they're paying my, you know, the neighbors in the duplex like mine next door to me are paying way more than I pay. And I haven't had a rent raised in 18 years. But, the word is that they plan to charge 1150 a month per unit for, for these units. And I don't think there's, you know, what I think that leads to is, you're not going to get single-family in there. I think you're going to get multiple, you know, two or three families moving in there. And that's what happened in these other ones. And they were-
Well, that's a community engagement piece that we have the ability to be able to handle those types of things as a city. This is about a zoning in that perspective.
Four buildings in that space.
Okay.
Come on.
Any other comments or questions from the audience?
I mean, I have one more suggestion. Please, before you make any decision, just look on Google map, Google Earth, down on that one little section, just a six-box area around there.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Are you?
Yeah.
Look down on it. And, I mean, and do you see where Captain D's and Brahms are?
Mm-hmm.
And do you see how those, that, those parking areas? And if you look down toward Sunset, there's a, it's kind of like the back of that parks area, there's an alleyway down through there behind O'Reilly's. That thing fills up with homeless and junkies and stuff. And that's kind of like, what you're going to do is, you're going to make an identical little back thing, you know, there's going to need, they're going to need a dumpster back there. And they're probably going to set it back there by the-
The, the, yeah. And again, we're getting away from the property itself. We're talking about other adjacent properties in here. Those, the issues that you're bringing up are things that can be addressed, but I would recommend that you address those with, with the police and the community engagement organizations.
We made a call.
Like-
God.
Okay.
Never, never been there.
Any other questions or comments? To the commission.
Chairman, I'd like to make just a couple of comments because I, I know I've said this, you know, at every meeting that it comes up, but I need to get this in the record and I need to address some of these, their opinions is what they are, right? But they're not facts. So, renting a unit instead of owning it does not make you any more likely to commit a crime. There's no correlation between the two. So, I understand that the neighborhood might experience some issues with that, but there's no evidence to support that putting, that rezoning this property, because we don't actually know what the look of the, of what's going to be built there is going to be. So, the act of rezoning this property is not going to impact that situation. I just want to, I just got to make sure that we understand that. There, we hear this a lot at these meetings where people want to say that multifamily is low-income or it's, or it's crime-ridden. Those just aren't the facts. And so, I just feel that it has to be restated when, when we hear that. That is not true. And there's no evidence to support that. So, and in fact, I see that these are, that mostly everything around it is SF-2, which I think is because that, that they were grandfathered in. I think this is the appropriate zoning classification for this property. And while this body can't police niceness or respectfulness, what we're looking at is, does this zoning fit the surrounding zonings? And I don't think that there's a question that it does. And so, I just wanted to restate that it doesn't matter who owns this property. The act of rezoning it is appropriate. They could then sell that and somebody, a different party might develop that. We don't know the future of that, but we know that by rezoning it, it will fit the rest of the neighborhood. So, I just feel like that has to be put in the record. And that's my comments.
May I ask one question? May I ask this man a question over here? There's that property on the other side of the fence. Did they buy that or did they rent it? As I understand from the Realtor, I inquired about buying it and they told me it was off the market. And then they put a for rent sign up there. And I inquired about renting it and they said it was already rented. And now I see-
Yes, sir. You're more than happy to have that conversation, but again, that's not about these two properties right here. You're asking about ownership of another property. We're not even addressing that on the agenda this evening. I mean, I apologize, but I don't see the relevance as far as what we're covering right here. You guys are more than welcome to have that conversation, but I didn't, I mean, but I don't know what it has as far as relevance in this whole piece here. Okay? Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, I have a question. So, just back to looking at the zoning map, I want to make sure I'm understanding this. So, everything that we're looking at here is FS2 until we get to MF12 by piers. Is that-
That's great. To the east, yes.
And so, is there any other multifamily inside this yellow?
There, there very likely is, which would be considered legal non-conforming at this point.
Patsy, you may be on mute, so. You're on mute.
I'm on mute.
In fact, 807 and 809 Young Street are duplexes.
I, Patsy, I believe you're muted.
Sorry. As was said earlier, this is an older section of town. The rezoning was, the zoning classification was probably based on the size of the lots rather than whether or not they had duplexes or not. So, there are several non-conforming uses in this area. And unless the property owner comes in and asks for it to be changed to a multifamily, it's not changed. And the previous versions of SF2 duplexes or what it used to be are one duplexes were allowed as permitted use.
So, if there was any upgrades made to 807 or 809-
Can we go back to the other view real quick?
Non-conforming and they would have to comply.
I'm sorry, say that again.
807 and 809, just north of there, just what Patsy was saying, are non-conforming.
Mm-hmm.
If there was any upgrades made to those, then those would have to be rezoned.
Okay, so, if we, if the commission-
They, they don't have to be rezoned. As long as they're non-conforming uses and they're not expanding it more than 30%, they wouldn't have to have, have to be rezoned unless, you know, if they do interior modifications to it, that kind of stuff, it wouldn't require it to be rezoned.
As long as we agree, continue to agree with the non-conforming.
Right. And that's, if they are increasing the non-conforming, can't be done more than 30%. And that is, if they wanted to come in and add on to them, they'd have to ask that. If they're just, you know, upgrading the interior, doing work, you know, roofs and that kind of stuff, that doesn't require it to be rezoned.
So, and I, and I apologize, but as a whole, that yellow zone is FS2. There's a few, there are, I don't know the number or the percentage, and I don't know if that information's here, of multifamily within this FS2 that are non-conforming. And at some point in time, I didn't catch all of Patsy's comments, which something that happened to those units, we would have to decide whether to allow them to stay non-conforming or they would have to be moved to FS2, correct?
If they were to expand the footprint over 30%, the actual square footage of the structure. Yeah.
So, I mean, I know there are comments made earlier, but this, what we're looking at is FS2, and we would be flipping, putting a multifamily four in the middle of FS2, SF2, although there is multifamily 12 behind it.
Potentially.
Okay.
Across the street, 908, or 902, 904, is, in the C2, is that also duplexes?
Yes.
But that's a C2 zone?
It's the one with trouble.
Based on the historical as far as how it was zoned in there, yes.
So, I mean, I-
And these are grandfathered-in components that we're now getting into some of those that quite honestly are needing to be corrected.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, essentially, not essentially, but in part, we're trying to determine, I don't know if we're, it's fair to say we're trying to determine the forward future of this parcel or this, this piece of the city, protect the FS2 piece of it or try and slowly move it to multifamily? I mean, I guess I'm talking to, I don't want to speak for everyone. I guess I'm conjecturing for myself.
I think this is a good example of even what these guys have presented to us as far as even, you know, I'm getting outside of comments, but at the same time, it is relevant here where there's a lot of these, especially towards the center of the city, a lot of these lots and things like that that have the capability to be multi-use as far as use residential components. And this is where we've got to continue to look at what are some additional options that you can have, an MF4 or an MF12 that's even within a single-family, but keeping the look and feel consistent.
How's this, how's this going to be looked as concerning to the form-based code that we're going to expand down to the south?
Don't believe this would be included in that area based on the overlays that we've discussed thus far. But, once again, I mean, I, you know, in this, I think we're considering the best and highest use of this particular piece of property here.
So, and I want to, I ask a few, so you're, so the comments from the department are that you feel this is the best use of this, of this property in concert with everything that's going on around it?
I'll defer to Patsy on that. Patsy, can you comment on that?
Well, usually, use things like multifamily MF4 to be a buffer between the commercial that's along 71 and the single-family residential that's to the east of it. MF4 allows us to create that buffer space. And we've seen it in other places. I think if we were updating the zoning ordinance today and converting, some of this area would have already been MF4.
Okay.
And there's nothing stopping anyone from building a single-family home in an MF4.
Yeah, I, I, I hear, understand. And I'll just make my comments for the record and I'll move on. I, you know, I obviously want to say that I agree with, with other members who voice their concern. I don't see any causality between the income level and, you know, crime. I'll just put it that way. And I would never vote in such a manner. But I guess I'm not, I'm not prepared and don't think that piecemealing MF into the middle of a SF2 is something that I'm comfortable with. So, I just want to make my comments and I'll, and I'll speak for me and move on.
And I'm glad you brought this up on here because this is an example of where we have the form-based codes and want to potentially be able to have additional areas. And I realize this is not part of it, but it might be an area that we should look at as well in that whole piece. And you guys are more than welcome to come and talk to us as far as some of the things that we're discussing as far as form-based code, because it's pretty remarkable, some of the things that can be accomplished in there as far as, you know, good development in these areas where you can have these MF4, MF12s and single-family all being mixed within a block in that whole piece there. And so-
I'm not speeding that up.
Yeah. The thing, the thing that we're trying to make sure that we're being careful of, you guys obviously have, or apparently have, I shouldn't say obviously, I don't know, because it's an opinion, just like Peyton was saying, that there's, it sounds like there's an opportunity as far as the landlord. There are things that you guys can address that with different groups within the city to help with some of those things. Specifically, this as far as the rezoning, it's, it's very difficult to take those into consideration without having something in writing that we could actually be able to see associated with that individual as far as the property owner is concerned here. This is about looking at what's best as far as the zoning of this property in that. And I would tell you, as far as in the downtown area, especially not that we're discounting any other area of Springdale, we've spent a significant amount of time and we don't want things to be a challenge. And so, we do respect your opinions and things like that. But, you know, if a vote goes in favor of this, there's a lot of many other factors that go into that consideration.
I totally understand. I just want to reiterate that my concern is, we're in a single-family, it's all single-family across the street where it's all multifamily. That's where the criminal problem is. My concern is it's migrating over towards our, that entire single-family. That's just how I see it.
Okay. And that's a valid point, and we appreciate it. Any other comments or questions from the commission? This would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote. A call for the vote, Mr. Covert?
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Oh, yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. This rezoning passes 8-1. This will go to the commission, or the, I'm sorry, the City Council 26. Okay. And I do appreciate all the comments on this. And again, I think these are the healthy dialogues that we need to continue to have as far as in the downtown areas and things related to form-based code. So, appreciate the additional discussion. Next section is conditional use. We have C-21-01, Aiden Soto Rivera, 1210 to 1218, South Thompson Street, conditional use for use unit 52 food truck and a C5 presented by Aiden Soto Rivera.
I believe Patsy's had a considerable amount of conversation with this one, so I'm going to let her take this one.
Is the owner here?
No one there to represent it?
No.
Okay. I'll hold my comments back until we-
Okay.
See if he's going to show.
Okay. Well, I'll pass over this one. I'll come back to it again.
Well, I'll pass over this one. I'll come back to it again. Next section is on Platts. We have replat 21-01 Casey's, 2100 East Robinson Avenue, presented by Morrison Shipley.
You ready for this one, right?
I am ready for this one. And I know what state I'm in and what the time is. I am so, so apologetic for-
That's all right.
We'll have some conversations in the office tomorrow. So, we are appearing once again to present our third Casey's store in Springdale. This one is at the intersection of 412 and Oriole Street. We have a replat, some variances and other items on this evening. This first item is a replat. We have an unplatted tract of property and a lot from another subdivision that we are going to, we're seeking permission to replat into one single lot. We've reviewed all the comments from staff and have agreed and amended our plans to reflect those changes.
Staff comments?
Planning has no further comments based on the most recent submission. Katie, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Does engineering have any comments on this?
Not on the replat.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. This would be a recommendation. Recommendation? Okay. Have a recommendation by Mr. Covert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
This replat passes 9-0. Next item, R21-02 Northwest Holdings LLC, Harbor Meadows, Highway 412 and South 64 Street, presented by ESI.
This is Brandon Rush again for ESI, excuse me, representing this replat. You can see there, essentially just splitting this property, and it's related to a large scale that will be coming up later. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Staff comments?
Planning needs some minor adjustments made to the acceptance. We'll be glad to work that out. Katie, do you have any comments on this one?
No, no comments on this one.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. It's be another recommendation.
Recommendation?
Recommended for approval here by Mr. David. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Replat passes 9-0. Thank you, Brandon.
Kevin, I have one comment. If they want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinances need to be in the planning office by noon on Thursday.
Okay. Does that go for both of those that were done, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next section, large-scale developments. We have L21-01, the steel yard north of East Mountain Road, directly across from Gray Drive. Also have a variance for deviation of paved parking requirements, presented by ESI.
Brandon Rush with ESI again, representing this steel yard project. It's a 7.3 acre site on Mountain Road, 39,000 square foot building is proposed, basically a metal fabrication, cutting shop type of use. Happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Any comments? All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. In all residential, commercial, and industrial developments submitted after August 30, 2007, all utility wires, lines, and/or cable and said developments utilized by electric and/or telecommunications companies shall be placed underground excluding 12,000 kilovolts and above. One of the questions we had was if the developer would be willing to bond for the sidewalk improvements that are shown as a portion of a future multi-use trail. Brandon, can you speak to that?
I can. I know we've talked with the steel yard property owner about this, and they've spoken with the NWA Trailblazers, and they, they want to, I guess, help however, however they can, and if that's, that's the best way. We've also talked about grading that area, getting it ready for the trail. So, they're, they're ready to help out, however is needed on that trail.
The other comment we have is taking into consideration the proposed future buildings and likelihood of any perimeter plantings placed on the east of the building would be damaged during construction. It seems reasonable to request a two-year bond on the landscaping for this portion specifically. Can you speak to that, Brandon?
That, that sounds reasonable.
Okay. All right. Engineering comments? Show FFE on all proposed structures or remove them from the layout. Sidewalk trails should be within the right-of-way or a pedestrian easement. Street improvements should extend the entire property boundary that abuts the street. Street lights should be in the right-of-way. Coordinate with NWA Trailblazers about trail crossings over railroad and submit grading permit application. Katie, did you have anything further on that one?
Nope, you got it all. Thanks.
Can you talk about the variance for the paved parking requirements a bit more?
The variance for the gravel in the rear, essentially a storage area for steel products that be temporarily stored outside until they're loaded on a truck, or just essentially storage area rather than having asphalt.
Okay, so it would be for the side of the building and for the back, is what I'm seeing, correct?
Yes. We have considered switching the driveway to the east side of the proposed building, but essentially, yes. Front will be paved with the parking and driveways.
But the driveway going to the rear would be gravel?
Yes.
Okay.
Be any vehicles parked on the gravel?
What's that now?
For there be any vehicles parked on the gravel?
No.
My, my, I'd like to address that.
Yeah, if you can state your name for the-
Okay, my name is Mark Broadway, and I'm a representative for the steel yard.
Okay.
And the purpose of the gravel lot in back is for, as Brandon indicated, is for storage of product. Also, our trucks will enter the front of the building, will load and unload those trucks, and they will exit the rear of the building, come around the side of the building, and then back to the drive, concrete drive in the front. There, we don't plan to do any parking along the edge of the building at this time. And the reason that we feel like gravel is appropriate is the type of product we will store would damage asphalt, and it would be a constant maintenance issue. And then the heavy trucks that will run back and forth around the building will also create damage to asphalt. So, we're proposing that we do a solid foundation gravel with, you know, crushed rock to provide the drive that we need to access the rear of the building and then come back.
So, the access, as far as getting back there, will be the same access that they would use to exit?
No, no. Ideally, the access to the back will be through the building, because we will bring our trucks in the front of the building-
Got it, okay.
And we will unload those trucks, and then the trucks will come around back. Or we will load the truck after it enters the front of the building.
Okay, perfect. I wasn't understanding as far as through the building.
Okay.
Sounds similar to the, what we did with-
Yeah, it does.
Ed, do we have any fire considerations as a part of this?
This isn't the drawing I saw just the other day where they, there was a paved fire access road to the rear of the building.
I believe they've made some updates past the point of what we're showing here.
Right, and I just found out that the fire marshal just told me that they'd agreed to a GeoGrid. They'd agreed to a GeoGrid with paved, with gravel.
Yeah, if you guys will come to the mic.
That's not what you just said, yeah. You need to, because we need that for the record, because GeoGrid is different from just the geologist saying it's properly packed. GeoGrid is a system.
Right. We, we are looking at installing GeoGrid under that gravel, and also under the main building, because of the soil that we've determined, it would need that, and it would give us better longevity, and it'll solve a lot of the issues usually created when you're driving heavy trucks over that type of surface.
Okay.
In this particular case, the fire department, oh, I'm sorry, Blake Holt, Springdale Fire, in this particular case, the gravel would be acceptable with a GeoGrid underlay, and just with the owner's understanding that if maintenance becomes an issue, we will exercise our ability to require an improved surface in the future.
Great. Thank you. Any other staff comments?
We don't have anything else.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Just to be clear, so there's only going to be gravel in the back of the building? That's what we're talking about?
Yep.
I don't have a laser pointer, but-
Clear.
Gravel here, and around. So gravel here, right here.
If you're looking at the packet, it's on page 189. And there actually is Joe's gravel paving, Class 7 base, six inches thick.
Okay.
GeoGrid underneath is what they are agreeing to on it. Okay.
As Ed mentioned, they've actually made some improvements to the site plan based on their request since the time that this was sent out.
Okay, okay. Recommendation to approve? See, we probably need to do a call for the vote on the variance first. Oh, you want to do the variance? Okay. Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes. The variance passes 9-0, and then do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Covert, second by Mr. David.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Large-scale passes 9-0. Thank you all. Next large scale is L21-02 Gus Roofing Company, 4211 Dixie Industrial Avenue, also a variance, B21-09, deviation of commercial design standards, facade and exterior walls, the roofs, presented by Expedient Civil Engineering.
Jason Ingles with Expedient Civil Engineering. Our client is looking at putting in a 5,800 and 2,400 square foot building with, he's going to occupy one of the spaces, then he'll have three tenant spaces. We show paved parking for all the customer parking spaces out front. They are requesting a variance to allow gravel in the back for storage. He is a roofing company. He stores roofing materials, has trucks coming in and out. We are planning to fence that, the extents of that gravel paving and screen it from, from public view. And then we have some commercial design variances that we're also requesting as well. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Staff comments?
Comments? All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of the construction plans and all residential, commercial, and industrial developments submitted after August 30, 2007. All utility wires, lines, and/or cable and said developments utilized by electric and/or telecommunications companies must, shall be placed underground excluding 12,000 kilovolts and above. A variance would be required for the proposed gravel parking area which you're discussing. What kind of equipment will be stored here?
I'm not totally sure, other than I know he's a roofing company, and he'll be storing, I'm sure, roofing materials. And I'm, you know, if I'm a roofing company, I've got trucks that load the shingles on the trucks, onto the houses or buildings. Outside of that, I don't know. The other three tenant spaces are still up in the air. They've got overhead doors, so I don't, I don't know if they're looking at plumbing companies coming in there and leasing a space from him, and trades like that, so.
So, the vehicles would likely be trucks? No, no heavy equipment here? No tracked equipment? Is that what you're saying?
I don't believe there would be any tracked equipment, though.
Okay, all right. Landscaping comments? Provide dumpster foundation landscaping. Existing plantings are shown on the adjacent lot to the west. Can you speak to that, Jason?
There's some existing landscaping that we thought we could take credit for that's on the adjacent lot to the west. We realized that we need to put some plantings on there, and we'll get that shown with our revised drawings.
Okay. Let's see. Provide overall material percentage calculations to accompany elevations. The planning commission will likely be curious about it. Can you-
I cannot answer that. The architect of record got COVID. He was just released from the hospital on Sunday, and I spoke to him today via text. He's not yet released. He's still on oxygen, still has a home nurse, so he obviously couldn't do any work on it today.
Elements with facade over 100 feet in linear length shall incorporate wall projections under recesses a minimum of three feet foot depth and a minimum of 20 feet contiguously. Building facade shall include a repeating pattern that shall include no less than three of the elements listed below. At least one of these elements shall repeat horizontally. All elements shall repeat intervals of no more than 30 feet, either horizontally or vertically, and we're asking for a variance of that. Roof line shall be varied with a change in height every 100 linear feet in the building length. Parapets, gable roofs, high roofs, dormers shall be used to conceal flat roofs and rooftop equipment from public view. Alternating links and designs may be acceptable and can be addressed during the development plan.
So, if I could speak to some of those. I believe the architect of record, he showed canopies on all the windows and doors that face both the frontage to the street and also along the customer parking sign. He's also got shown in the elevation some planters with some benches. I'm not sure that Civil picked up on that and got it shown on our site plan, but that will get shown with any revised plans that we submit showing those planters.
It's in here.
Yeah.
Without having the material percentages in front of us, can we confirm, is this a predominantly prefabricated metal construction for the building that we're proposing?
It is.
Okay.
Anything else?
Katie, do you have any comments on this one?
The only comment we had was that the radius of the entrance curb should be contained on the property or within an easement. Looks like it encroaches on the next property.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I could speak to that. This particular owner also owns a lot adjacent to it, so he can give himself an easement for that radius extending on him. We'll just need to get that shown on our site plan.
Sounds good.
So, the only two variances that we're looking at is the facades and exterior walls and the roofs. There would have to be another variance as far as the paved parking.
Right.
Okay. And I would, I would tell you, as far as when you guys are looking at that, there's going to be a lot of scrutiny as far as the type of equipment in that whole piece, just because it's as far as storing materials. I think you're just talking as far as one tenant, not even all of them in that regard. I would tell you, that probably is going to have a lot of questions in there. So, just something to think about when you go back to the company you're representing on it, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other, any questions or comments from the audience? Is it commission? Is it commission?
Jason, is there a reason other than cost that you can't meet the commercial design standards for the offsets and the materials?
Well, the building's only a hundred and twelve feet long, so that's one of the things for the continuous, for having to break up every hundred feet, we're twelve feet over that. I think the architect of record attempted to try to meet that ordinance by putting in, because then the code, it says that you can do things like canopies and windows um, along the facades to try to, I guess, a way to overcome some of those items that you're not meeting, if I understand it correctly. Maybe Austin can burst me on that, but.
Well, past the roof line component, there is the actual facade component which would just have the request for the actual wall projections, um, minimum of three foot depth, and we're not meeting that either, I don't believe. Is that correct? Okay.
It is a relatively small building, I mean fifty-eight hundred square feet's not too big of a building for especially an industrial type building, but.
But are there, I think the questions that Mr. Peters had was, are there some additional things that could be done to meet those expectations?
There probably could be some, I don't know what they are, maybe Austin can let me know what those are, but, um.
Well, uh, you'd have to make that recommendation on your behalf.
I have one question. This is a commercial building, not an industrial building. So you don't know what the other tenants are going to be, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we're not talking about an industrial building. We're talking about a commercial building that could have retail in it, could have offices in it, could have anything else as a standard commercial building.
Correct, I mean, we, we do show a Wayne's Code, a Masonry Wayne's Code, and above that, we show EFS. And above that is where we have the metal panels.
But there's one side that there's nothing on, right? It's just a metal building on the back.
The south side faces the rear of some duplexes. And we have, um, there's quite a bit of trees, existing trees that, that are in an existing ditch on the south side. And of course, we're putting in a six-foot wooden privacy fence as well. And of course, the west side is overhead doors with a brick Wayne's coating, similar to what we did with Williams Tractor.
How tall is the Wayne's coating?
I believe it's four feet, but, uh, I haven't measured it. I'd have to refer to the drawing.
It, it just looks to me like that, that south facade, if you put a six-foot fence up, all I'm going to see from the duplex is the top of the metal building a hundred and twelve feet long.
We could look at, if, if it's, if the commission's request is to try to do something with the south wall, south elevation, we can definitely look at that.
Is that, is the south wall the only one that's really causing the variance needs to be addressed?
Well, we're, I mean, with the building being predominantly metal, that, that itself is going to be a variance item from, from commercial design standards, despite which facade we're discussing.
To answer your question, yes, the Wayne's Code is four foot tall.
And, and remind me again as far as the roof piece?
Yeah, so if the, if the roof line is exceeding a hundred linear feet, then they would be expected at the hundred-foot mark to make a, a deviation to add some entrance to the roof line. So even if the building is a hundred and twelve feet, at that a hundred and twelve foot mark is where we'd expect that change to be made. Or somewhere within that length overall, that change to be made. And, you know, if it's in excess of a hundred feet, then, you know, we would expect to see that.
Right, like, again, it's only twelve feet past that minimum requirement. You know, I could see if it were two hundred feet long, a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty. But I've seen this commission vote on that same variance before and it's been granted.
Okay.
I, I don't know if that says anything, but.
Okay, this will be a call for the vote for the variances.
Is it to the commission for comments, Chairman?
Yes, it is.
I just want to mention that, that we typically try to do variances where there's a hardship. We, we usually don't just grant variances because of cost or cost. There usually needs to be a good reason why and, 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 you know, it just, I, we can't speak to other, other projects that, that variance was approved because there might have been other things that that development offered in exchange for that variance. So I think it's hard to look back and, and kind of blanket say that that usually gets approved. I personally don't have a big problem with it because it's not a gigantic difference, but, um, I think I do have a little bit of an issue with the, with the facade of a commercial building, um, just because, you know, we want to save some money, that's, that's my only comment.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Will this be a call for the vote for the variances?
Do you mind if we take them separately?
That is fine.
Thank you.
So we have a call for the vote for, uh, variance A, facade and exterior walls. Call for the vote for variance A. Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Parker?
For facade and exterior walls?
Yes.
No.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
David?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Uh, variance A for facades and exterior walls does not pass nine zero. Do I have a call for the vote for the roofs? I have the, the variance for deviation of commercial design standard. Call for the vote for B. Call for the votes for variance B on the roofs, roof line?
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
David?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Uh, variance B does not pass nine zero. Okay? And large scale? Do we have a motion for large scale?
Motion for approval of large scale development?
Yeah, it'd be a motion for approval of large scale, um, you know, with as-is, no, no variance.
As-is, no variances.
That we requested, right. So a motion by Mr. David, second?
I've got a question before you
Yes.
vote. If the variances are denied, does that mean the, if the large scale is approved but the variances aren't, we just have to submit revised elevations meeting ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, meaning that you'd have to be able to, to comply with the percentage as far as the metal. Uh, the hundred and twelve foot, as far as the roof line, you'd have to show as far as, uh, different variations in that and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't make that happen.
It'd ultimately be the large scale as-is in that whole piece. So I have a motion by, uh, Mr. David and a second by Mr. Covert.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes, large scale passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next item, L twenty-one dash zero-three, Stronghold Northwest, Arkansas. Thirty ninety-five wagon wheel roads, we have variances for deviation of commercial design standards, twenty-one dash zero-two. For entrance, parking lot orientation, pedestrian flow, central features of community space, multiple buildings and commercial centers. Outdoor storage, trash collection, loading areas, detail features, entryways, landscaping and screening, presented by Gavin Smith Engineering.
I am joined online by Brett Park from Parko, the architect as well.
Okay. Any comments that you have on this development?
Oh, it's, it's ready to go.
Okay, uh, we'll go through as far as staff comments, um, but I'm quite confident we'll have a lot of questions about your variances. Okay.
Any comments? All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans and all residential and commercial, industrial developments submitted after August thirtieth, two thousand and seven. All utility wires, lines, and/or cable in said developments utilized by electric and/or telecommunications companies shall be placed underground excluding twelve thousand kilos and above. Landscaping, uh, I believe we're asking for a variance of frontage landscaping on this project, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We're showing utilizing the existing canopy on the south of this property to satisfy the perimeter landscaping requirements and the screening. Um, as a part of that, we would inspect that at the time of CO to confirm that that would be in compliance with our minimum screening standards.
Yes.
Uh, we're asking for a variance of commercial design standards as it applies to amenities, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commercial design standards for architectural predominant materials, asking for a variance there. Building facade shall include a repeating pattern that shall include no less than three of the elements listed below. At least one of these elements shall repeat horizontally. All amounts shall repeat at intervals of no more than thirty feet either horizontally or vertically. We are asking for a variance there. Principal building on a site shall have clearly defined, highly visible customer entrances featuring any three of the following. We are asking for a variance there. In regards to engineering comments, bidding permit application. Katie, do you have anything further on this project?
No, no further comments from engineering.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. Uh, I mean, I'll, go ahead.
What's your hardship other than cost? I don't, I don't understand.
Uh, we're off the, we're out of public view, um, behind two buildings there and we've got screening on all the other sides. So we, uh, there's, there's no gain for any money spent, so that money would be ill-spent.
I mean, specifically in regards to the building itself, or are you speaking to some of the landscaping components?
Um, yeah, both, I mean, they're, the, these are not, um, primarily for commerce. These are boutique workspaces for building cabinets and things like that. So a lot of the special amenities that would be offered to the public will not be, um, used by the public. And, um, yeah.
I would think that the, the frontage landscaping would have a pretty significant impact in terms of public visibility.
Uh, it wouldn't be visible from
The frontage landscape?
Yeah, there's a, there's already an office in use by Stronghold. Um, and it was updated a few years ago, so that, um, you know, it's already existing in front of that. These buildings will be shielded from public view, not only by that office building, but by two storage buildings that are pre-existing on site.
You're saying that there's existing frontage landscaping on the northern side of this property that abuts wagon wheel?
No, no, there's, there's maybe just, uh, you know, a couple bushes that were planted on either side of an entrance door.
Yeah, I can tell you as far as, I mean, because I'm drive by that all the time. There's no way that that's not going to not be seen by the, the public view.
The proposed shops in the back?
Yes.
Um, well, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know how to respond to that, they're downhill from the road and there's buildings standing in front of them, so I, I agree that you will be able to see parts of the roofs, but you wouldn't be able to like observe
There's a roofing company in an old, in, in a house that used to be an antique store that's in front of it.
And then there's two, uh, storage buildings between the roofing company and the old antique store.
Very small in that whole piece, I'm just telling you, that, that's
Yeah, I, I mean, if
I don't, I, I'm like Mr. Peters on here, I'm struggling with the hardship piece as far as complying with the landscaping requirements. I'm also struggling as far as the building materials on a commercial lot, or a commercial building of this nature here. Um, there's just a lot of variances that you have in here.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Mind if I ask, what's the square footage of the buildings that you're building?
Uh, I, I would defer to the site plan, I, I don't memorize numbers like that, I'm sorry. Um, I think, uh, you know, I, I don't know, I don't have that right in front of me, it's, it's right in the packet in front of you. On the site plan, each building has a label on it.
Do we have the architect with us?
It's, I think it's ten thousand square feet, it's like twenty-five hundred per unit, there's four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my comment is the, you know, uh, our variances here go from A to J. And I think normally, you know, a variance or two, you know, we, we will kind of look at, but, but if, if, if someone comes in and doesn't want to meet, you know, ten of the, uh, uh, of the design elements there, that, that just seems to me kind of, um, like we're not trying hard enough a little bit, like we're just wanting, you know, try to see what we can do there and, and I think that when I drove by there, I could see quite a bit, there's a, there's a shed, I could see well past that shed when I drove by it.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, there's a shed, yeah, there's like a barn or something, and I could see well past that barn, uh, down the way to the back of that. I don't know, and given that, you know, wagon wheel's not, you know, that's not tucked away in a commercials, uh, development somewhere, it's right, uh, right on a very busy road there, so I guess I just, you know. To me, if, if there had been two or three variances, it would have done a lot for me trying to understand, uh, what was actually necessary, because that's the problem. There, I'm not saying that there's not one or two variances in here that don't make really good sense, but when there's so many, it's, it's, it's very tough to, uh, to understand.
I agree, when there's this, this many, I couldn't group them, there's no way I could vote for a group that big. I would like to, if we do, if we do vote, I would like to vote one at a time with discussion on each one of them, so that we know exactly what we're getting into. A to J just blows your mind, basically.
Kevin?
Go ahead.
Not to challenge Dale, but I, I might take the exact opposite perspective on that. I think submitting this many variances to us is kind of making all of the work that we've done on commercial design standards just go away. I also think, I, I would take the whole package, just say, if that's what you are asking us to do, then we look at it as one whole package. Because that's the way frankly it was submitted to us. There are so many that we can't really look at this individually, in my opinion. And I agree with Peyton, I, I think this is kind of saying we don't have commercial design standards.
I'm, I agree with that, I'm just saying as a whole, there's no way I can pass something like this as a whole, because that's just a
And, and, that, that's what I'm saying, I
Like you said, it's, it goes against everything that we've built up to, at this point.
I agree with that, Dale, yeah.
I just want to caution you about getting into individual items and doing design at the table.
Yeah, and that, I would agree with that, and so I would, I would prefer, for what it's worth, to do it, just take them all at one time and vote.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question? Um, would it be possible to kind of group them and vote them on two different groups? Because a lot of these amenities are about not being connected to the sidewalk and not inviting public walkway traffic. Um, for instance, pedestrian flow, central features and community spaces. Um, you know, so if we could, you know, we, we would happily meet the spirit of the ordinance any way we can, you know. I, I had a different opinion about how visible these were, but I, I hear everybody's opinion. opinion that, that they're more visible than I had thought. But, you know-
My only, my only comment to you on here is, is that, um, and, and I'm just gonna be upfront, it doesn't feel like there was any type of work that you guys were willing to do as far as working with the planning department of what are some options? Because we've gone through as far as with other developments like this and, and worked very hard, the planning departments worked very hard as far as potential options. And those options have been presented to us. You're specifically wanting to just continue with variances.
Yeah, we, we pre-gamed these, uh, variances with the planning commission before we submitted for large scale, and I, um, it was not our intention to dodge requirements. And, uh, you know, we would perhaps like to table this if we could, if we, you know, come back with something better now that we've heard your opinions. But, um, we thought that because we were so far off the screen and so, or so far off the street-
I'd recommend that you guys go back and really kinda rethink a lot of these and table the whole thing.
Yeah.
Um, because I think even the planning department could have, have some suggestions for you as far as even, even central features and community space. I mean, well, this is a, this is an area that there's been other businesses that we have voted on, and they have made the appropriate accommodations. There's others that quite honestly have had several like this as well, and it's very challenging for us to look at this. I don't, I don't know that you're gonna get a different result as far as even doing it in groupings right here.
As far as doing what?
If you wanted us to vote on this as far as groupings, I, I would strongly suggest that you might wanna table this whole thing and go back and look at it.
Yeah, I request to table this, um, you know, until we can go back and talk to the planning department a little bit more. We, we had kinda thought we had a, a good approach here and that we were gonna be meeting the spirit of the ordinance with the, um, types of uses we were proposing and how we were gonna present those to the public and how these buildings were gonna work with the surrounding buildings and the few lines of the neighbors.
Just go look at some of the other developments along wagon wheel in that area, that some of those others also had the opinion that it would not be as far as visual to, um, the community, and they are, in a big way. And they made adjustments in that whole piece. And again, you're talking about a commercial building here, so you've heard as well as far as variances is typically because of hardship.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so I request to table it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and if you'd like to follow up with us, we'll be glad to work with you on the-
Okay, appreciate that very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Next large scale, 21-04 Casey's 2100 East Robinson, variance of deviation commercial design standards, the entrances, parking lot orientation, pedestrian flow, landscape presented by Morrison Shipley.
Thank you commissioners. Doug Melton, 2407 Southeast Cottonwood Bentonville. We're proposing, our large-scale development's proposing the construction of another Casey's general store at the northeast corner, this intersection of Oriole and 412. It'll be our U3 style store, which is brick construction with a hip roof, shingles, uh, approximately 39, 3,900 square feet. We have worked with the staff and, excuse me, have met all of the, uh, and addressed all of the comments. We're also asking for the four variances that you've mentioned, Mr. Chairman. If you want, I'll speak to those very quickly. The first was in regard to the entrance. This requirement for secondary entrance kinda flies in the face of some of the issues that we, uh, commonly address with a convenience store, which is safety and security. We try to keep one entrance only so that all the traffic is coming in, all of the pedestrian traffic is coming in from the front of the store. The staff can look out in the, in the driveway, they can see the pumps, they can see the people coming in, and so we try to keep one entrance only to the front of the store, and that is the, the nature of that variance. The second variance was the proposed parking. We've exceeded the 60%. Once again, we try to keep our parking and everything out in front of the store where the staff can see it, and we have visibility to the main street, which in this case would be, uh, out on the US 412. The third variance is the sidewalk connection. We have the requirement of connecting to City of Springdale Public Right-of-Way Sidewalk. There is a sidewalk on Oriole, there's one along US 412. We really do not like taking them across the parking lots because of all the vehicular traffic. ADAG really discourages having pedestrian crosswalks through parking lot where you have a, a lot of vehicular traffic. We have a grade issue coming back out on Oriole, being able to make that an accessible sidewalk, and so we worked with staff in what we're proposing in our large-scale development is has, having an accessible ramp and sidewalk coming out of the, uh, backside of the store, and it'll connect with the Greenway Trail. And, uh, so that is our, uh, solution to that, that, uh, variance. And the last is no, uh, building foundation landscape is proposed. This is, uh, a typical convenience store. We have the, I, idea of keeping sidewalks around the building as much as possible. It helps in vermin control, it helps in being able to keep the site clean and maintained, and then as well as having, uh, vending machines, ice machines and that sort of thing out along the sidewalks.
I think typically on that perimeter landscape, well, that, around the building-
I'm sorry?
I think we've even had it to where they just moved that to different areas as far as the percentage.
Yes, I believe we have reallocated that in the past.
Yeah, we, we have. We've addressed the landscaping in, in other fashions, yes.
Okay, thank you. Staff comments?
Any comments? All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans in all residential, commercial, and industrial developments submitted after August 30th, 2007. All utility wires, lines, and/or cable in said developments utilized by electric and/or telecommunication com- companies shall be placed underground excluding 12,000 kilos and above. No parking on landscaping shown, which is one of the requests. No pedestrian connection provided to 412 Oriole. I did wanna speak a little bit about this one. I believe that we have done this, specifically maybe at least one or more Casey's locations within Springdale that were abutting state highways and were able to achieve maybe some specific site constraints on this site based on the size, but I think we have been able to achieve that specific item on some of the other cases.
That's correct. This, this, the unique nature of this site, we're winding up with probably a 60% of the site is gonna be remaining as green space because it, it just can't be developed. It's, uh, kind of an odd piece of property, so we, we had some site constraints as well as the, the grade considerations.
On that specific item, would the developer be willing to consider updating the plans to possibly accommodate a, a pedestrian connection internally on the site?
I, I'm sorry, I'm-
Would the developer be willing to accommodate a pedestrian connection on the site? Internal pedestrian connection that were- To Oriole or to 412, either one?
Oriole is gonna be almost impossible for us if we took graphic and grade considerations in there. I believe the site, the nature of the site is gonna make it very difficult for us to be able to bring, if we bring anything back out on the, uh, uh, west side, or the east side of the property rather, we're gonna be coming into a dead-end sidewalk and we're gonna be spinning them right back around into the driveway. There, there's no drive, there's no sidewalk back to the east of us in front of that, uh, parking, at the car lot next door.
Sidewalk-
And so the only, the only really, the only way we could really get them back out where they're gonna be able to go anywhere would be bang, bring them back out, uh, on the southeast corner of the side. And then we're gonna have to bring them across the driveway once again, and we really, you know, ADAG really does not encourage bringing accessible pathways back out across there.
Right. Rick, can you go back to the site plan, please? The trail connection that we're showing on the north, i- is, is there not the possibility to have a, a walkway connection coming off what we're showing there, moving to the west and tying back onto Oriole right there?
We, we, we just couldn't make the grade back through there, it was just physically impossible, and so, y- I'm not really proud of the way that walkway is shown. We've had to, to, to do a lot of work and put a lot of angles and landings in that to make it accessible, to make the connection back in there, so.
Okay. All right. And we have no, no building foundation landscaping shown, and we discussed earlier the entrances. I think we're, we're more than familiar with the, that request for entrances. I know it's part of Casey's corporate model, that they usually only have one, uh, public entrance. One thing I was gonna ask is, would there be the willingness to perhaps do, uh, some sort of, uh, canopy over the egress doors that are shown on the east and west facades of this building?
I guess I'm gonna have to look at your- Elevations, I'm not quite sure what you're talking about, sir.
We have it up here.
Okay. And you're wanting canopies over-
Yep, just asking about the possibility of adding some canopies over those egress doors, just to add some, some detail to those facades?
I can certainly run it past the client. I mean, I, I don't think it's gonna be an unreasonable request.
Okay. Katie, do we have any engineering comments on this project? Past the grading permit?
No.
All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? We can take all the variances together or separate?
I'd like to make sure that I'm clear. So, we are asking for a variance to not do foundation landscaping because the parking goes up against the building. Are we agreeable to taking that square footage of landscaping and putting it elsewhere on the site, or is it just gone?
Can you, can you speak to that?
I believe we, I believe we did add additional landscaping to account for that.
Okay.
If we didn't, we will.
Okay. All right.
So, we're relocating, not eliminating?
That's, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The relocating perimeter landscaping-
No, uh, this building foundation-
Building foundation landscaping, sorry.
Yeah.
To other portions of the property.
That's right.
That is being addressed, okay? And then the pedestrian-
Well, I also wanted to say that, uh, I think this site's a little unique in that we do have pedestrian flow. We normally talk about it going out to the dr- the roadways, but in this case, it ties into a trail, which to me, looks like that's more likely where pedestrians would come from anyway. I see a connection to Oriole by going down the pathway to the Greenway and then going to the sidewalk on Oriole, um, that way. So, it, it looks to me like the intent is met, although in a very unique way.
And I think you guys addressed that, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And so, just like the landscaping piece, it's a revision of the pedestrian flow from the traditional as far as in the front?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The, the, the Greenway goes back into the subdivisions as well as connecting to Oriole, which will bring us back down to 412, so it is a roundabout way, but we think it's the safest way to move pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure it's no- noted the appropriate way on here. You're not asking for a complete variance of pedestrian flow. It's a, it's a revision in that whole piece. Ben, did I capture that correctly?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is, normally I would be against not connecting the pedestrian out to the street, but in this case, we are actually getting that connection, just not in the way we're used to seeing. That's what I'm saying.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments on the commission?
I would prefer to take them all together unless there's an op-
Okay.
That's fine, I just wanna, I just wanna, uh, voice appreciation for them, for the, being able to, uh, work with us on that and meet the intent of the ordinances as they were written.
Completely agree. So, this be a call for the vote? Call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
All right, we have a call for the vote by Mr. Covert, and this is for all the variances together.
Yes, sir.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Variance is passed at nine zero. Do we have a motion for the large scale?
Motion for large scale?
Motion by Mr. Covert. Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Large scale passes nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
May I ask clarification? Were you meeting, were you voting on the variances sitting as board of adjustment? Do I need to s- to wait for the next item?
It's all done.
Yeah.
At one time.
Good. I just wanna make sure I didn't have another opportunity to embarrass myself tonight. Thank you all.
You're good, thank you. Appreciate your patience. Uh, next large scale is Harbor Meadows Town, Town Homes, south side of Lynch's Prairie Cree- uh, Prairie Cove, presented by ESI.
This is Brandon Rush for ESI, again, representing this project. This is in Harbor Meadows, PUD, um, end of Lynch's Prairie Cove, there by the Maples. It's 2.8 acres, proposing 33 townhomes, uh, seven buildings, ranging from three to seven units each, um, with little decks or patios, pergolas, um, looking out on the lake there. We provided some elevations, if you wanna look at those, or, uh, happy to answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
Would first like to ask, is, is there someone present from the ARC here tonight at Harbor Meadows? Is there anyone with us?
I'm just a resident.
Okay, we'll, we'll hold comments. Yeah, thank you. Plenty comments? All comments from the utility companies and/or other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans in all residential, commercial, industrial developments submitted after August 30th, 2007. All utility wires, lines, and/or cable in said developments utilized by electric and/or telecommunication and communication companies shall be placed underground excluding 12,000 kilos and above. Coordinate with the adjacent property owner to the west to provide pedestrian crosswalk striping where the internal walkway aligns. Brandon, are you, are you familiar with what I'm speaking about there?
Yes, uh, I think that actually was, was laid down a while ago and has gotten faded.
Okay, so, is there, is there a plan to re-stripe that as a part of this development?
Yep, make that happen.
Okay.
Katie, do you have any comments on this project?
No, I have no further engineering comments.
Okay.
Kevin, I have one comment. Do we have something in writing from the ARC at the Harbor Meadows, approving the look of the buildings?
Kevin, this is Brian Moore. I, I could speak to that if, if it's okay with you.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I actually have approval from the ARC, subject to their attorney looking over the documents. I don't have it in writing. I can get John Duke to write an email to Patsy for in the morning if we need to, or whatever we need to do on that end.
We will need something in writing from the ARC saying that they approve it before we can do forward.
Not a problem. We can get that done.
Is that it, Patsy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir. Uh, any questions or comments from the audience?
Comment. My name's Curtis Leister, 6537 Apple Shed, on the nearest residential private right there. Uh, I have no problem with the development going in. I'm speaking for Harbor Lake. It's a man-made lake, it's dammed, and, uh, there's no way for sediment to flow out. Walman Shell built their beautiful Class A headquarters right across the street. When it first rained, it's not showing there, it's before that, um, when it first rained, uh, the flow, they couldn't handle it first, they, and you can't do anything about it afterwards. So, I'm, I'm asking for Harbor Lake that you could, um, be aware of, that the lake is filling up. I've done two SEKI readings over the past two years. Now, SEKI reading is not for depth, it's just for clarity, but it's only, uh, one to one-half, one to one and a half meters deep at the bridges. So, I'm just speaking for the lake for you to know in the future to prevent sediment from flowing into it during construction and afterwards with the driveway with the impervious surfaces. impervious surfaces, um, and even for future development across Sunset. That is all part of Harbor Lake watershed. It's not one of the priorities, water sheds for the IRWP like Spring Creek Creek is or Clear Creek, but it's there, okay? We have two water sheds that cut through our, our, our property at Harbor Meadows, uh, the other is Covenant Creek. That's over by, uh, Gene George. I was actually downing that today, literally, and that has been filling up, but that has a chance to flow downstream to the, um, Brush Creek. Uh, if you were to see what the Tommy Express, when they built that on the other side of the highway last year, when it first rained, all that mud and all just ran right down into Covenant Creek. Now, that's different than what Harbor Lake is. So this is Harbor Lake, it's man-made, it, it's dammed, it doesn't drain out, so it's filling up, and I want you to know that. I'm just a resident, I'm not on the board, um, it's not really that scientific for depth when you do a secu reading, but when you drop a weight down and you measure the depth that you come to at the bridges, not in a boat out in the middle of the lake, I just want you to know that. I do welcome it, my house is the closest house to this, just north of that, and I'm fine with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? To the commission? Any questions or comments on the commission? This be a motion?
Motion, go through, subject staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Peters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
No parking lot landscaping shown.
Large scale passes nine zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, y'all.
Uh, next item, we have B twenty-one dash zero eight ESS Properties LLC, fifty-one eighty North Oak Street, variance for deviation of drainage criteria for detention ponds, presented by Craft and Toll.
Yes, this is Daniel Ellis with Craft and Toll and Associates. We're requesting a variance for the requirement to have a structure to be two feet above the, uh, hundred-year water surface elevation for a detention pond. This was part of a previously approved large scale, and we actually have a shop building that's located west of our proposed detention pond for the office building that we're constructing. And due to topography and existing, and other existing structures and concrete slabs up there, it's, it's not feasible for us to actually get that shop building raised up to where it will be two feet above the hundred-year water surface elevation for our detention pond that will be constructed as part of the office building.
Staff comments?
Katie, do we have any comments? Katie, are, are you still with us?
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Um, I was gonna say, the engineering department does support this variance, we've worked with the engineers, um, to try to come up with a solution to see if we could move the pond. It doesn't seem feasible with the way, um, the site is laid out. We did come up with a compromise where we'd like to install a concrete trickle channel from the outlet of the detention pond to direct flow around that building, so in the vast majority of rain events, water's gonna have a place to go where it's not gonna go right in that front door, and we feel like that's a fair compromise.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission? This be a call for the vote? Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mrs. Mueller.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
The variance passed as nine zero. Thank you. Uh, last item we have is a waiver, twenty-one dash zero one, Trey Thompson, forty-seventy-eight carriage crossing lane, waiver of sidewalk requirement presented by Trey Thompson. Any Trey Thompson? We're gonna go outside here real quick and make sure.
I don't, I don't believe we have anyone here.
Okay. Um, did we have Aiden Soto Rivera that was able, it was a conditional use for food truck court in a C five? Okay, I don't see either one on those, okay. So we didn't have representation on C twenty-one dash zero one or, uh, the last item as far as a waiver, W twenty-one dash zero one. Well, no, so, um, planning director reports? I think we have.
Uh, Kim.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say as far as, uh, do we need to do officer, um, approvals or nominations?
Well, we, we usually do that after the reappointments are made because all the terms are up on January thirty-first, so we will put that on the February agenda, so if anybody wants to send us their nominations, we'll put it on the February agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, council actions taken in December, the replat for Parkway Plaza, lots one A and two was approved, the final plat for West Elm Estates was approved along with the sidewalk variance for the sidewalk along West Elm. Uh, the planning commission upheld, I mean, the council upheld the planning commission's denial of the sidewalk waiver for Bill Adams on Lowell Road and Sanders. Uh, the council vacated the utility easement at lot two of Elm Springs Center subdivision, and the alleyway is part of block five, the Hulkam edition. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, the island annexations were three tracks, and Benton County was approved by the council as well. The, uh, two thousand and twenty-one budget was approved, and with that budget, uh, approval, the planning department was given an additional staff person for a, an inspector, we're looking to hire, uh, an inspector who will look at, um, landscape requirements, uh, design standards, and help with, uh, inspecting for the form-based code area. We have advertised that position and hope to fill it as soon as we find someone qualified. The, um, budget also approved a salary increase for, um, planning commission members and additional five hundred dollars a month. Um, the next work session is.
Patsy.
Go ahead.
I think.
It sounds great, but that can't be right.
I think you mean fifty per month.
What can't be right, did y'all got a raise?
No, you said five hundred a month.
Oh, it's fifty, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, that sounds.
I wish to see if anybody was awake at this time of the meeting.
I did perk up when I heard that, yeah.
You start putting dollars out there, I did, I was bright-eyed on that one, so. Nope, she said it, it's in the record. It's good.
Just checking to see if everybody was still with us, okay, it was a fifty dollar a month. It started out as a hundred, came back to fifty. Uh, the next work session is scheduled for January the nineteenth. We discussed at the, the meeting we had with, uh, uh, different groups about the, uh, optional form-based code to do a session with council. Um, I talked with the mayor today to see if we could put that on the, um, meeting agenda for the next, uh, city council committee meeting, which is scheduled for the eighteenth. That is a holiday, Martin Luther King, so we don't know for sure whether the council's gonna meet that night or not, but, so, we would like to have it where we could have it either on Monday night or Tuesday night, depending on which night the city council has their committee meeting, so we can present this concept to them before we get too much further along, to see if they have any questions or input before we start putting the final documents together. So if anybody has any questions or any comments, I'm, that's pretty much all I have to report.
Okay. Any comments from the commission? Thank you, Sharon. She did a great job this evening.
Right, I have one other comment.